Okay, we all set?
Everyone's entered now.
Fantastic, thank you. Okay, good evening, it's six o'clock and I'm calling this public meeting to order in accordance with the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, MGLC 131, section forty, excuse me. And the Boston Wetlands ordinance, Boston City Code ordinance is chapter seven dash one point four. The Boston Conservation Commission will be holding this virtual public hearing, or a series of public hearings on June fourth, twenty twenty five, to review the following projects to determine what conditions, if any, the commission will impose in order to protect the interests of the public and private water supply, groundwater, prevention of pollution, flood control, prevention of storm damage, protection of fisheries and land containing shellfish, and protection of wildlife habitat. Uh, this evening, the commission will be holding a public hearing, uh, followed by our regular meeting. In accordance with chapter one oh seven of the Acts of twenty twenty two, we're conducting this meeting online. To ensure public access to the deliberations of the Conservation Commission, the public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. Additionally, the mini-meeting is being recorded. If you do not wish to be recorded, please turn off your video. Members of the public may have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine, star six to unmute yourself, or send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov. Uh, for the record, I am Michael Parker, Chair of the Commission. Uh, I'll call the role of the rest of the commissioners. Commissioner Linay?
Okay, Amy Linay?
Yeah, sorry, I skipped over something, so sorry to catch you off guard there. Um, Commissioner Wilson, are you with us? Okay, uh, Commissioner Condon, I don't believe has joined us.
Uh, I thought G C S joined us.
Oh, good, good. Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Estes Summer, some smart G Y A C.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
And Herbst.
Okay, could staff please identify themselves?
Elena Itamarri with the Environment Department.
Didi Hernandez with the Environment Department.
Vivian Dela Paz with the Environment Department.
Great, thank you. Okay, first item on the agenda this evening is notice of intent for D E P file number zero zero six twenty thirty one and Boston file number twenty twenty five dash zero zero nine from, uh, Fadera Engineering on behalf of two fifty Bremen LLC for the proposed construction of a multi-use building with eight residential units and one ground floor commercial space located at two fifty Berman Street in East Boston. Uh, resource areas land subject to coastal storm flowage. This was continued from the May twenty first, twenty twenty five hearing. Uh, here's, who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Tom Schultz here on behalf of the proponent.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, so, uh, this has been continued and I think we were down to, uh, two or three, uh, issues. I wasn't here last week, but I obviously reviewed the notes. Uh, so I think we are going to be talking about the backyard.
Correct.
Suggested, uh, planting four trees. We have questions about that. Uh, light colored roofing materials. And, um, Elena, what else is, uh, outstanding here?
Yes, uh, the, I believe the light colored roof materials we had recommended as a, a special condition for the proponent to consider before starting construction. And then in addition to the tree question, we'd also hope to add a condition, uh, requiring the proponent to share the operation and maintenance plan for previous pavers before construction commences.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Okay, Tom, do you want to speak to, uh, those issues?
Yeah, um, I think the two about the previous pavers and then the white roof are totally fine special conditions on our end. There were some questions about the rear backyard. As Commissioner Parker correctly stated, there was previously a compensatory flood storage area back there. And this is a land subject to coastal storm flowage project, so there is no need for the compensatory storage. So instead, we removed that and planted fi- or were proposing to plant five trees. And that includes two cousa dogwoods and then three flowering dogwoods. And those are going to border the rear of the apartment building. And these trees were chosen specifically because they are being planted by the Boston Tree Alliance actively in the city. It was actually one of the most planted trees in the city by that group. And they're also well suited to the climate in Boston, require little water. Uh, they're pretty pest resistant, and then they also require minimal pruning and don't get too large for an apartment building. So there shouldn't be too much maintenance on behalf of that. Um, those are just going to be in a line in the rear of the apartment where the combined stories flood storage used to be. And below that is going to be grass, so no more impervious materials back there at all. Um, I think that covers the, all of the changes that were made. If you have any questions about the plantings or the special conditions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, sure. So I think, um, as far as the trees go, I think there's some skepticism that you can fit four or five trees back there and that they would, uh, be viable. Uh, so did you want to speak to how you came to that number? Because when I reviewed, uh, the notes, uh, the meeting minutes and talked to Elena, um, that, uh, seemed to be an issue. I think last or last week they were talking at last hearing, talking about one or two trees. And you have, um, suggested, uh, if I'm not mistaken, four to five trees. So what are your thoughts on the viability of, uh, planting those many trees in that tight area?
Yeah, while it is a tight area, the two dogwoods that we, um, proposed are quite small. They grow from a maximum of eight to fifteen feet in height and don't get too large in width. So I wouldn't be too worried about trying to plant a number of those back there. And you wanted to put a couple back there just to make sure there was some shade in that area. Um, as that's a growing concern in Boston with the whole climate resiliency. But if you'd like to see some of them removed, maybe we can do a special condition that potentially three are put back there. One cousa dogwood and two flowering dogwoods. If that would appease the commission, we're open to it.
Okay, I'll let, I'll let others like Commissioner Linay, uh, weigh in on that. Um, I guess my, my thought on that, um, uh, two things. One is, um, uh, if you, you know, we, we might structure this that, uh, you know, you've committed to, let's say, four trees. And you find out that it's only feasible to, um, plant two trees. Uh, we'd probably like you to check in with, um, uh, the Division of, um, Urban Forestry, Forestry in Parks to see what you can do about the other two trees maybe being planted. I don't know if they need street trees around there or something like that. Um, or if you go ahead and plant, uh, let's say four to five trees, um, and, uh, a couple of them don't take. Uh, similarly, we'd like to see those, uh, trees that don't survive, um, be planted elsewhere as well. And I think that could be done in coordination with, um, again, uh, the Urban Forestry Department. Now, that led me to a question though. Um, did you say Boston Tree Alliance was planting these trees? Or you were using their planting program as a template?
They're actively planting these trees. They were the top, or I think they were the top two most planted trees in the city, if I'm not mistaken, based on one of their, um, booklet and questionnaires that was actively available online.
Okay, so just to be clear, will they be planting those trees for you?
No, no.
In the backyard, okay, okay. Um, Elena, what do you know about these trees and, uh, whether they're on our native species list?
Yeah, I, I think that, um, I can check on that quickly. I think my, my main concern with the trees is, uh, as you mentioned, uh, the question of whether they would actually be able to survive in that small of an area. Uh, Tom, I recognize that you mentioned that, that because of the anticipated size of the trees, it should be fine. But I think that maybe just to cover bases, it might be reasonable to also include a special condition that would specify that depending on the number of trees that the commission wants to see planted, uh, as part of this project, those trees either be planted in the back and, um, there needs to be some sort of guarantee that they'll survive after a few years. Um, and then if it's either deemed, uh, that it's not feasible to plant four trees in this area or that, um, you know, the trees are planted and a number of them don't survive, uh, that those should be planted elsewhere in East Boston. Um, but I'd love to hear the, the commission's thoughts on that and if there are ways to sort of fine tune that recommendation.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Linay, uh, Linay, um, what do you have on this?
Yeah, I, I did have some questions on the species. Um, I think it's a little peculiar to plant. There's a native dogwood here and a, and a non-native. Um, I think maybe we run the risk of the non-native actually, um, overpowering the native species. So I, I think if we're talking about reducing the quantity anyway, it might make sense to just go with the native. Um, I do think they can get actually a little bit wide. I mean, um, fifteen to thirty feet, if they're in ideal growing conditions. And I think they're planted, shown now at about eight feet on center. So I, I do think that closer to three backs probably makes sense for the space. Um, and I think if, if there is an opportunity to plant trees elsewhere, then that's certainly always a positive.
Okay, so are you, uh, would you be in alignment with a special condition, uh, as we outlined before? Um, we shoot for, and Tom, I can't remember if you said four or five. Um, I think you said five in your presentation. I thought it was going to be four.
Yeah, it's currently five. It's two cousas and three flowering dogwoods. But I can see where, um, Commissioner Linay is coming from. We can either change out all the cousas to just straight flowering dogwoods to make those the nat- or the native species and exclude cousa.
Okay. Commissioner Linay, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, and what do you think about the constraints on the site? I mean, how many dogwoods do you think realistically?
Um, I think probably three max. Um, I mean, they'll certainly grow according to sort of what space they have. Um, but I think that's probably a reasonable amount. And then I think maybe the other point is there, there's some, um, diseases out there that do impact dogwoods. I think there's been some success with cultivars, um, which I know sort of strays from the goal of straight species for the ecological benefits, but it may be just worth investigating that. Um, let's see, I think that was the only thought I had. And then just ensuring that they're, um, you know, cared for during the establishment period, that's key.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Condon?
Well, I, I like the ideas, um, Commissioner Linay has. I think if, uh, at the cost of reducing numbers, if we can give the native trees the room to grow, that does sound good. I would still sort of remind the proponent that the roof space is still available and any consideration that could be given to make it green would also be appreciated. But I'm in line with the suggestions here and the special condition. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Estes Smart?
Smart G Y A.
Sorry, it's going to take me a minute or two.
That's fine. I'm all right with that. Um, I, I, I'm comfortable with, uh, the three trees in the backyard and having removed the hardscape back there. Sounds like this is responsive to our questions from the last meeting.
Fantastic, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Herbst?
I, I also think that's a good solution. I think we, uh, and maybe this is language already in there, but I think we typically have language about, uh, not issuing an order of conditions until the trees have survived the first three years. Um, so if that's.
Issuing a certificate of completion?
Yes, and.
Not an order of conditions?
No, I'm sorry, I, I meant certificate of compliance. Um, anyway, I think that's typical language that we have, that we need to see that. Uh, thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, uh, Elena, do we have any comments from the public? Any raised hands?
We don't have any raised hands and nothing in the inbox either.
Okay, so what I'm looking at here are, uh, three special conditions regarding the planting of three native dogwood. Um, species trees, um, it makes sure that we have in the order of conditions, uh, the language or the fail-safe language that Commissioner Herbst talked about, that no certificate of completion until we know that, uh, the three trees have survived or we've made other arrangements, uh, for planting off-site. Um, light colored materials and the, um, operation maintenance plan for keeping the pavers clean. Is there anything else? Sounds like a no. So I would entertain a motion to issue the order of conditions with those, uh, three special conditions uh, and with Elena to check on that, uh, fail-safe language, uh, and close the hearing.
So moved.
Three of a second. Okay, Commissioner Linay?
Second.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, I.
I, okay, I'm sorry, I thought you started a sentence, I. Okay.
That was an I.
I'm a little rusty. I'm a little rusty. Okay, Commissioner Linay is an I. Commissioner Condon?
Third, I mean hi.
Yeah, okay, please. Okay, Commissioner Estes Smart G Y A.
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote ayes. Okay, it's five, nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good one.
You too. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is notice of intent for D E P file number zero zero six twenty forty from Child's Engineering on behalf of the Massachusetts Port Authority for the proposed repairs to a deteriorated seawall, including the repointing of joints and filling of voids with concrete fill at two four two Northern Avenue in South Boston. Um, resource areas are designated port area, land subject to coastal storm flowage and coastal bank. Who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Brad Washburn from Massport.
Uh, Chet Maris from Massport and, uh, Andrew Nielsen from Child's Engineering.
Okay.
And, uh, Robert Mitchell from Child's Engineering.
Sorry about that, Robert.
Great. Robert's new to Childs. It's the first time I've met you, so nice to meet you. Um, taking the lead here.
Can you guys hear me or not? Sorry.
Yeah, we can.
Oh, sorry, I'm on safe driving mode, so I didn't know. Um, yeah, so, um, we're going to have Childs kind of give a presentation on the work and schedule. And then Chet and I are available for questions.
Great, thank you, Brad.
Uh, good evening, everyone. My name's Andrew Nielsen with Childs. So we have a brief presentation to go through about why we're here. We could move on to that. Um, so we're talking about Liberty Wharf, uh, just a little bit of repairs to a seawall. Um, we say we're at Liberty Wharf, but if we move to the next slide, um, we're actually talking about seawalls underneath Liberty Wharf, not necessarily part of the Liberty Wharf pier, uh, pile-supported pier structure. Uh, there's two seawall sections, one that goes actually outs, uh, along the fish pier and then one that's, uh, parallel to the Northern Ave roadway, just, uh, just outside of it in the waterway. Next slide, please. Um, so the, the wall construction's pretty simple. It's very common for the Boston waterfront where we have, uh, common-sized granite block seawalls, um, extending down into the mudline on the fish pier side. And then on the Northern Ave side, they go down to a concrete toe that was a previous repair from several generations ago. Um, they're, they're dry stacked, so that means there's, there's no real mortar holding them together. At one point, there may have been mortar between the stones, but there's nothing left at the moment. Next slide, please. So the reason why we're here tonight is because during a inspection that Childs conducted in twenty twenty four, uh, we found some deficiencies with the, the two sections of seawall. Uh, the stone seawall that runs along the, the fish pier portion of it, um, is in poor condition. We found that behind the seawall, there's some very large voids. They're not obvious to the, the untrained eye because they're really just behind all the blocks that you can easily see. Um, you'd have to get into the joint areas to see those. And then the concrete toe of the Northern Ave portion has deterioration. That concrete toe was, again, it was a repair from a long time ago, um, where they encapsulated a lot of timber piles that didn't want to be exposed but had become exposed with changes to the harbor. Um, so that concrete is actually deteriorated, exposing some of the timber piles. Next slide, please. This is a simple plan where we show the areas that we're discussing. So just for reference, on the bottom, running horizontally is the Northern Ave roadway. And then on the left-hand side, running vertically, is the fish pier. So the large void is underneath Liberty Wharf, uh, because the actual wharf itself extends onto the, the fish pier land side. Um, excuse me. And then there's the concrete toe that's right adjacent to the Northern Ave side. Next slide, please. Uh, and then two cross-sectional areas that we have here showing a little bit more detail. So on the left-hand side is the, is the fish, fish pier portion. Um, it, the void, as I said, it's a little bit difficult to see to the untrained eye. It kind of looks like a big ice cream scoop went along and scooped out all the material there. So there's not really much of a void space at the very top of the wall or very bottom. But in the middle, we're missing quite a bit of material where in some places we found it was likely extending back maybe six feet, eight feet behind the, the exterior stones. And then the cross-section on the right, uh, we've got the, the Northern Ave portion. So we can see the Liberty Wharf, uh, pier deck on the top portion of the cross-section. Then extending vertically down is the stone seawall, which sits on top of this concrete cap, uh, so excuse me, concrete toe. Um, that toe again was the, a repair from some time ago, and that was encapsulating the timber piles, which we do show here. Whenever we found these disintegrations, we did find some exposed timber piles. Next slide, please. Uh, just a couple photos showing the fish pier side where the large void is. So the photo on the right-hand side is a typical joint between stones. They ranged anywhere from two inches wide to six inches wide. Uh, this one is about two inches, so it's a very typical one. And then in the photo on the left-hand side is where we were able to snake a camera back there and get a, a photo of one of the larger voids. So, uh, typically what we'd like to see here is a lot more smaller aggregate, not necessarily very small, but smaller than the large blocks we see. Instead, what we're left with is very large voids and some, in some blocks that are left behind. Next slide, please. Uh, these photos are a little bit difficult to understand what's happening, but what we should be seeing here, this is on the concrete toe portion on the Northern Ave. Um, we should be seeing some relatively flat concrete faces, but we're not. Instead, we're seeing the eaten-out concrete portions. And then in both photos, you see a little bit of, uh, the, the exposed timber pile. There's really not much left of that at all. It was very difficult to find, uh, in general. Um, so the goal of the project is to fill these areas so we don't see those. Next slide, please. Uh, so the proposed repairs would include, um, relatively simple marine construction methods that are made a little bit more complicated by the location of them because they're underneath the Liberty Wharf. Um, so for the fish pier side where we have that large void behind the seawall, what we want to do is seal up all of the joints that are there, um, and then fill behind with like a flowable material, um, in, in several different, uh, lifts. Um, the, the reason we want to put the, seal the joints up is because we don't want that flowable material to flow back out. We want it to stay put behind the wall. And then for the concrete toe portion, it's a relatively simple process because it's, um, it's actually exposed at low tide. So it's a simple form and pour method that we're going to be doing. Next slide, please. Uh, these two cross-sections, very similar to the ones we just saw, um, just show like final condition. What are we looking to achieve? Really just filling the voids with the, the concrete material or the flowable material? It shouldn't, I should note that we're not changing anything for this property. We're really just providing repairs to the existing structures that are there. Next slide, please. Uh, so proposed construction methods, um, we're going to be bringing in a barge for this and marine contractor would be bringing in a barge. Uh, they would, they, they are not able to get a large, uh, vessel underneath Liberty Wharf, so that would be staged just outside of it along the fish pier. Um, you know, the, the contractor is going to have to work with the tide cycle, so they're going to have to use divers for portions of this. Some of it is always underwater, some of it is always above water, and some of it is tidal. Um, so we know that we're going to be using siltation curtains and debris booms as, as we would for all waterfront projects. Um, the contractor will go in and clean all the marine growth from, uh, the void spaces and the joints of the blocks. Uh, the, the purpose for that is so that we can get good adhesion for all the material that we're going to be putting in there. And then for the large voids behind the seawall, they'll be doing, uh, the, the flowable fill using tremi method. So they're going to have to use a lot of lifts, meaning, you know, a lot of different, um, elevations that they're going to be pouring at. Um, so that will slow the process down a little bit. Um, and then for the, the concrete toe portion, as I said, it's relatively simple. They can do a lot of the work at low tide, um, where they're just going to essentially form it up after cleaning it out and then put new concrete in place of where the, uh, concrete should, should be. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, as I said, we're going to bring in a barge. Um, you know, that's where the contractor is going to be staging their diving operations. Also, their mater- where they're going to have their materials on there, where they're going to be generally working out of. Uh, they'll also have timber floats, um, that they'll put underneath the pier to, uh, again, stage material if they're handing things down to a diver or maybe they're working in the tidal area. Uh, people that are working that are not divers will be working off of those floats. Uh, this will all be encapsulated in the debris burden and debris boom and siltation, uh, siltation boom, you know?
Okay.
So I had, I had one final point, which was we expect construction to be somewhere between four to eight weeks, and that was it. That was the presentation. We almost made it.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. Um, okay, I just have two quick questions. So maybe this is for Chet. I won't bother Brad in the car. Um, how often do you have, uh, the seawalls inspected?
Sorry. Um, so, uh, this in, in particular, this is a lease requirement, uh, associated with our tenant at Liberty Wharf. Um, so I believe there every five years, uh, the inspections, uh, is, is the requirement?
Okay, thank you. Um, what about your own infrastructure? Massport infrastructure, would, do you have a protocol for that?
I, I believe it's about, uh, every, every five years.
Similar, okay.
Actually, that's not true. No, I'm sorry. Let me back up. Uh, we have a comprehensive review of all of our infrastructure every year by a consultant. Uh, it's actually required as part of our charter.
Okay, thank you. And then Andrew, I see you're using like, uh, it looked like non-shrink grouting. Um, what, what is the expected, um, or what's the life expectancy or useful life of the repairs that you're, uh, performing?
Um, you know, twenty, thirty years, really? We're not really using the grout for the joints, um, as a long-term repair. We don't feel as though the wall particularly needs it. We, we do need it to make sure that the fill material that we're placing behind the wall stays there.
Okay, understood. Okay, thank you. Um, Elena, what do you have on this?
Yes, so, uh, our team conducted, um, a site visit on May twenty ninth. Uh, during that, unfortunately, I wasn't able to be on the site visit, but, um, based on my, uh, team's debrief of it and, uh, the notes that I have, uh, I understand that there was a discussion about potentially incorporating signage on site to indicate that construction is in progress since it's a, um, publicly, it's below a deck that's publicly accessible. Um, so if that's something that the proponent is okay with doing, that's, that's fine by us as well. But I also recognize that it's not necessarily in the jurisdiction of what the CONCOM is looking for specifically. Um, and then the other note that I had on this is that, um, DMF has not yet issued a comment letter for this work. Um, we had, or actually, uh, Brad had reached out to DMF and, um, asked to see if they had any questions by, uh, the end of today's workday. And, uh, I know, I haven't heard back. I don't know if the project team heard back from DMF.
No, I haven't heard anything back, no.
Sounds good. So, um, I know that sometimes the commission prefers to wait until DMF has provided comments, um, and, but will defer to the commission on whether or not they, they want to hold off because of that.
Yeah, it's something typically, uh, that we do. I don't remember, um, frankly, I don't remember ever, um, closing a hearing ahead of getting DMF, um, comments, um, but, uh, we can discuss it. Uh, Commissioner Linay?
I have a question about the joint cleaning process. Um, could you just explain a little bit more about how that's done?
Uh, sure. So I think a lot of it would be done by divers because the majority of the do- the joints that need to be cleaned are either in the tide cycle or below the tide cycle. Um, and they'll probably use mechanical methods for the majority of it. You know, essentially just hand tools to remove barnacles. That's pretty much the only thing that's there. Um, and they, we will require them to do a little bit of like a, a more in-depth cleaning just to see if we can get any like, um, surface grime off the stones so we can get, uh, better adhesion for the product.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Condon?
What's in that void?
Uh, just a lot of large stones, not much else. Um, it, you know, really what we have is the large stones on the face. So if you were to go under there in a small boat, um, you would see the large stones. As I said, it's, it's not noticeable by the untrained eye. But if you were to go up with a flashlight and look through the joints, may, if you pick the right one, you would be able to see pretty far back into them. Like I said, probably eight feet on the deepest areas. But, and that's eight feet behind the stones that are on the face. Uh, those stones are anywhere from like two to three feet thick. Um, so really what's back there is some, some large stones in some areas. You know, the void is not very consistent. Um, some areas, it doesn't, you know, maybe extends just a foot beyond the, the, uh, the exterior stones in other places. Like I said, eight feet. Uh, ideally, we'd like to see it filled with a lot more, um, smaller stones. Like I said earlier, not very small stones like crushed stones, but like your cobbles and things like that.
So that there is not a lot of, um, airspace?
There, there's a fair amount of airspace. I forget exactly what the volume is that we have estimated for it. We have, we spent a fair amount of time. There, there's a fair amount of airspace. I forget exactly what the volume is that we have estimated for it. We have, we spent a fair amount of time, uh, taking measurements, trying to estimate what the volume of the void is behind there. Um, so there is a good amount of space. Really what's happening is it's filling with water during the tide cycle and it ebbs out as the tide goes out.
Is the wall, um, at risk because of it?
No, so we actually looked at the wall to make sure that, you know, if, what, what are the consequences of this void? Um, the thing that makes this really difficult is that it's underneath the Liberty Wharf pier. And as I said before, that pier actually extends onto the land a little bit. So normally we just see the pile-supported structure out over the water, but this actually goes back and the pile-supported structure goes into the land portion a little bit, which was actually a very good thing in this case, because that means that everything that's above it is supported by that, that pile-supported structure. Um, we think that the loads that the walls carry in are relatively minimal, um, because a lot of it is taken up by that new Liberty Wharf pier structure. I say new as about, you know, tw- two thousand seven or, or thereabouts.
Let me see. Any other damage or risk or concern that you have around that area?
Nope, we don't have any, anything else because the, everything that's above it and around it is, uh, like, you know, there's structural slab above it. Like I said, the, the pile-supported pier structure, everything is independently supported. We just want to make sure the wall stays stabilized.
Thank you. Thanks, Jim.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Estes Smarjazi?
So originally what would have been in there were relatively, you said relatively large stones. Um, where did they go? I, I could see sand, you know, from the size of the openings you showed in the, the wall. Um, sand and gravel washing in and out with the tide, but, um, I, I'm just a little mystified about, you know, the sort of how long this has been going on, um, to get to the point where you have that much open space back there.
Yeah, so we would like to see it filled with the la- the larger stones that would not flow out of those joints. I don't know exactly what was in there, um, but we're assuming that it was fine fill material. Um, and of course, the, the, the ebb and flood over the, uh, generations has pulled it out.
This could have been, this could, this condition could have been going on for decades potentially.
Yeah, I mean, we don't really know exactly. Um, Child Engineering actually did a lot of the engineering work for Liberty Wharf when that was constructed. I just don't have a lot of documentation going that far back as to what the condition of the seawall was. We did, we were able to dig out an awful lot of photos during construction that show the, that air, like, just above that area. So like the, the grade level just above it, and we didn't see any voids there. So there's really no indication that it existed at the time. Um, so, you know, inconclusive essentially is the answer.
It sounds like a reasonable fix though.
Great. Anything else? No? Okay, uh, Commissioner Herbst?
Uh, no questions. I, I would agree that we need to wait for the DMF letter though. Thank you.
Yeah, unfortunately. Um, okay. Uh, Eleanor, any, uh, hands raised? I don't see any.
I don't see any hands raised and we did not have anything in the inbox either.
Okay, so I'd entertain a motion to continue this hearing. Uh, we're waiting on DMF comments. Thank you. Commissioner Linnae?
Hi.
Commissioner Conan?
Hi.
Commissioner Estes Smart Jasi?
Hi.
Commissioner Herbst?
Hi.
And I vote aye. Thank you. Passes five, nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, notice of intent for DEP file number, uh, no DEP file, DEP file number from LEC Environmental Consultants Inc. On behalf of the Massachusetts Port Authority for the proposed improvements to drainage, surface conditions and access, including site regrading and replacement of fences at Massport Marine Terminal, twenty Fid Kennedy Avenue in South Boston Waterfront. Uh, resource areas designated port area land subject to coastal storm flowage and one hundred foot buffer to coastal bank. Who's here on behalf of the, uh, proponent?
Good evening. Madeline Sewell with Massport, um, also joined by Chet Myers, Massport, and Audrey Bolak from HDR. And I'm going to pass it over to Audrey, uh, to tell you guys a little bit more about the project.
Thank you.
Sure, uh, Mark, um, Manganello is also here from LEC. But, uh, yeah, I will, uh, go forward with the project. Um, so this is a, uh, basically a grading, uh, project in the Massport Marine Terminal. You can see there, uh, on the map right there. If you go to the next slide, we're going to zoom into that location. And what you can see here, uh, is your resource areas are the red lines. You've got the, um, the areas of the land subject to coastal storm flowage. You've got the coastal bank and then you've got the coastal bank buffer. And I just noticed I did those opposite, uh, so they are flipped. Um, but, uh, the blue is the roadways currently there and the yellow are the parcels, parcels four, five and six. Um, this project-
Could I guess, could I just interrupt really quick?
Absolutely.
Sorry, just as a summary for all the commissioners, what we're proposing is just to do a little bit of regrading of areas that are currently unpaved. We're not going to pave these areas and we're going to install some, uh, stormwater management systems. And it's, they're all sort of short-term. The regrading is short-term. The stormwater management systems are short-term. Uh, it's just intended to, um, to, to make the areas easier to use over the short-term. The long-term plan is to redevelop these for water-dependent, uh, industries in the future. Sorry about that. Go ahead, Audrey.
Thank you.
Uh, well, he kind of just summed up what I was going to get to, but, uh, I'll keep going. Um, so these parcels are gravel today, uh, and this project is meant to just, uh, grade them in the temporary condition so they can be used as Chet said, uh, uh, but the ultimate, uh, concept here is to put them out for future development. And those will then have a full, you know, analysis of full approval by the CONCOM. This is just a quick regrading effort of some existing gravels, um, that are there. If you want to go to the next slide. Uh, so again, these are the, um, water, uh, the wetland resource areas and buffer zones that are on the site, um, which we were kind of shown on the last slide. Uh, off-site, you've got the coastal bank and the land under the ocean, but we are not, uh, not right, uh, directly adjacent to the water. Um, next slide. So the major components of this project, uh, regrading exists of gravel lots for interim use. Um, there is a little bit of pavement buried under some of that. Um, the intent is to reclaim it and leave it in place. Um, because the intent is not to, there'd be no fill imported, there'd be no, uh, fill exported. We're just, just a regrading effort, you know, um, just, just cleaning up as Chet said, uh, to make it a little more appealing. Um, replacing the fence along Fid Kennedy Avenue at the ends of all three parcels. Um, there's an existing chain links fence there now, uh, it's falling apart, so it's just replacing that pretty much in kind. Um, drainage improvements, uh, including some deep some catch basins and some French drains, um, right now. Um, I'll get to a little more detail about the drainage in a minute, um, but, uh, so I'll skip that for now. But, uh, there will be some infiltrating a little bit. I'll get into that in a moment as well. Um, and then at the bottom, no trenches will be open overnight. It's just, you know, daily stuff, so, um, next slide. So this is parcel four, um, and what you see here is, uh, the parcel area that would be impacting in yellow. Um, and then the blue, uh, solid blue line that runs through it is an existing drainage line and an existing catch basin. There's the blue box. Uh, that's, that's how the water drains today, uh, from that site. And then we're proposing a French drain in the purple there, uh, connected to the catch basin, um, but with this French drain. Uh, I don't, we didn't point it out in the last slide, but on the last slide, the French drain typical shows, um, the pipe is twelve inches above the bottom of the French drain. And what that does is allows the, you know, smaller storms to go below it, infiltrate what it can and then discharge the rest into the system that it goes into today. Um, so we're not intending to change any drainage patterns here. We're not intending to, um, you know, move flow around it. It's, it's mimicking existing conditions. Um, next slide. Uh, so these are just some photos of parcel four today. Uh, on the photo on the left, uh, you see, you can kind of see a chain link fence on the left side of the photo. Um, and then you're just looking straight down the parcel four area. The cars that are up above, that is not getting touched. That's a, an existing paved parking lot that is staying there. Um, it's just regrading the gravel that you see there and cleaning up that slope that's, uh, between the, the higher parking area and then the lower gravel site. Uh, the photo on the right, it's really hard to see, um, but there is a catch basin in that photo just to the left of that left shadow. Um, that's the existing catch basin today, um, that we would be tying into. Uh, the bottom center photo is just another photo stepped back a little bit of the same area. Next slide. So, uh, this is parcel five, uh, the bigger parcel. I've now rotated it, uh, ninety degrees. So north is kind of up and to the right. Uh, Boston Harbor is over to your right, uh, and Fid Kennedy is on your left. So again, in blue, the, the squares and the, um, blue solid lines are all your existing drainage system. And, and today the water just kind of sheets off the parcel and into the catch basins in the street. The intent, you know, later in the future is to have their own separate drainage systems on each parcel as they get developed out. Um, when these parcels get, get leased out. The purple is the proposed, uh, French drains, um, you can see along both sides. Cause we regrade this parcel to sheet the water, uh, a little bit better. Right now there's some, some ponding on the site. Sheet the water a little bit better to the sides, but collect it before it gets into the basins in the street. Infiltrate what we can on the smaller storms, uh, and then again discharge it to the same, same catch basins. Uh, the green circle that you kind of see on the bottom right is an, is a water quality unit that was installed, um, in the project that built the roadways out there and that built, um, Shoreline Road there next to the harbor. Um, the, on the left side of the screen, on the bottom, there's a small, uh, French drain that will capture the water that today, you know, sheets towards Fid Kennedy. It'll capture that before it gets to the, to the sidewalk of Fid Kennedy and infiltrate what it can. Um, next slide. And these are high-level, you know, drainage. There's, there's obviously more structures in there, but it, what this is showing is where the catch basins are and kind of the general direction of where they flow. Um, these photos are all just, um, randomly, uh, on parcel five, but you can see the gravel lots. Um, and they're used for storage of, of different tenants right now. Um, but all the pu- the puddles that we're trying to grade out to make it a little more usable. Um, as you can see with the puddles, especially in the winter, um, it's hard to use some of the parcels. So it's really just a temporary fix until these parcels get leased out. Uh, next slide. This is parcel six, uh, the final parcel, again rotated, uh, so north is up and to the right. Um, you can see the exist, there's two existing catch basins actually inside the site today, uh, on the top left of the screen. And, um, the third one kind of on the left side of the screen, we, we didn't find it in the field, but, um, the water currently today drains to a ditch line, which is that, um, long. Uh, within the yellow, there's a hatching, like a gray hatch beneath the yellow, um, and that's the land subject to coastal storm flowage. And you can kind of see that there's a, it shows a ditch line, um, with a, where the, that hatch kind of stretches out. Um, and it goes right to the existing catch basins today. So with the proposed, uh, French drain there, uh, and the connection in purple that you see to the Codfish Way, uh, outfall to the Boston Harbor, we'll be capturing that and sending it, it out through that system. Um, the rest of it's going to go like it does today to those two catch basins on the top left of the screen. So again, not changing flow patterns, just cleaning it up a little bit so that it flows a little bit better. Um, you know, over time, the, the gravel has just been compacted a little bit and then, and caused some pondings. And, um, this will help it be a little more usable. Um, I think next slide is the last slide and these are some photos. So in the photo on the left, you can see the catch basin is sitting in the foreground. That's one of those two, uh, catch basins that, um, I mentioned that are in the site today. Um, you can see them again in the photo on the top right as well. Uh, if you look closely, there's a manhole and a, and a couple of catch basins. They're, they're double catch basins. Um, and right now the water, uh, flows to them. In the top right photo, if you look kind of straight into the photo is the ditch line where that collects all the water from the site and down to the catch basins. Um, the bottom, bottom middle photo is just another, uh, photo of the site where you can see some ponding, uh, on it today. Um, that's what I had.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, um, my questions, uh, unfortunately Commissioner Sullivan isn't, Sullivan isn't here and I'm a poor substitute for him. Um, so as far as jurisdiction here, does BWSC have to approve any of this work? It looks like at least a portion of it is on, um, mass port property. So that might be a question for Chet.
Um, we will, we will discuss it with BWSC, but most of it ties into Massport's existing stormwater system, um, that Massport installed itself. So I, I don't know whether or not, I don't think that BWSC has jurisdiction over all of this. Um, Audrey, do you have?
I, I didn't think so either, but we can, we can confirm.
But we, we will discuss it with BWSC before we, before we proceed definitely.
Because we don't have a file number, you'll have to come back anyway. Um, what are the catch basins out on the street? Um, well, I, now I'm assuming this is your infrastructure. Um, they're, they're properly maintained. Uh, any problems there?
And Chair Parker, apologies. I don't mean to interrupt. Um, we, so since publishing the agenda, uh, this, uh, project has been assigned a DEP file number. So it's now DEP file number zero, zero, six dash two, zero, four, one.
Thank you.
Two, zero, four, one?
Uh, uh, yes, uh, two, zero, four, one.
Okay, so might be possible to close this. So, um, as far as the condition of the other catch basins and as far as protecting them during, uh, the work that you're doing.
Yes, they will be protected during the work. They, they didn't have, um, the catch basin silt sacks, uh, within it to make sure we're not, uh, you know, getting any sediment in there. There'll be other, you know, erosion controls as needed. Um, you know, most of it's a compacted gravel today, so there, there's not really a lot of erosion, but we will make sure that we, um, protect those.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, Eleanor, what do you have?
I did, um, not have anything to add on this with the exception of a special condition that, uh, our team recommends. Uh, when they conducted the site visit, they noticed that there were some catch basins within Shellfish Way, Codfish Way and Fid Kennedy Avenue that don't currently have fish plates. Uh, and so the recommendation is to have a condition that requires fish plates being installed at those locations, uh, during the project.
Okay, Chet, any problem with that?
No, in fact, um, I know that we identified one, uh, while we were walking around and I actually saw a few others that did have it. So I, I, I'm not positive how many do not.
Well, so I guess-
There's just one.
If there's just one, then that's great as well, but if we frame the condition, I think by identifying the specific streets and hopefully that'll cover all bases.
Yeah, we're, we're happy to add the sign. That's-
Okay. Good. Anything else?
That's it for us.
Commissioner Linnae?
Um, I had a question about the excavation for the French drains, um, and that cut material. Is that, um, staying on site and is there any concern?
Yeah, we're not taking any material offsite.
Yep.
Great, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, it's all superficial work, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Uh, Commissioner Conan?
Superficial work, you say?
No, superficial. So nothing below, I don't know what's-
I don't think anything below like maybe a foot or two tops, but it's probably more superficial than that even.
Okay.
I see.
Besides-
Oh.
All the catch basin work and all the French drain work will be done within that one or two feet depth?
No, in, in those cases, for the, for the, for the trench drain, we will have to go slightly deeper. But I, I, I was referring to the, the broader area, uh, but you are correct, Commissioner Conan, that, uh, for that, those specific areas, we will have to go deeper. We have to match the slope to get the water to drain, uh, into the adjacent catch basin, so.
Right, okay. So the, I heard that the regrading is for interim use. Does that mean it will be re, regraded after the interim use is done?
So, um, so the original intent, uh, was, uh, obviously to have waterfront industrial activity. That's what, that's what Massport, you know, our, our mission is to sponsor that, uh, and we had several, uh, new fish processing facilities that were going to be, uh, constructed, uh, in this location, uh, both of which actually came before the Conservation Commission received an order of conditions. Uh, but given the economic environment, uh, those properties were put on, or those, those construction projects were put on hold, uh, those tenant agreements. Um, and as a result, we're just trying to, uh, ensure that, uh, we have as much flexibility to, uh, utilize the property in the meantime, uh, while we, uh, entertain new redevelopment, uh, activities that again will be focused on waterfront industrial activity.
I see. So what is this interim period?
So it's difficult to know for sure. Uh, I don't, I don't think we're looking for more than like, you know, five years into the future. Um, but it's, obviously it, it depends on the economic environment, uh, specifically for the waterfront industrial activities that, um, will be utilized in this location. Um, and, and some of that is not within Massport's control. So, um, but, uh, I assure you, our, our real estate department is anxious, uh, to get deals in place, uh, to get, um, uh, to get these, these areas being utilized appropriately and appropriately for waterfront industrial activity.
Okay, so, um, I heard it will infiltrate what it can and the rest of it I assume will flow into the street as it already does.
No, 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 no. Actually, the, the trench drains are meant to intercept, uh, any water that doesn't infiltrate, um, naturally.
Yeah, so inside the French drain, there's a six-inch diameter pipe that will collect anything. Um, so below the, below the pipe is about twelve inches of like a stone material, which allow the water to fill up and infiltrate through there. Um, so below the, below the pipe is about twelve inches of like a stone material, which allow the water to fill up and infiltrate through there. If the storm gets deeper than that, it gets into the six inch pipe and that goes out to uh the existing catch basins and out to the existing outfalls.
And the whole thing is wrapped with filter fabric.
Yes, correct.
So you don't expect any flow into the streets?
No, the, no, we don't.
No matter how bad the rainstorm is?
I, I think, I think we can't say, you know, large hundred year storm events and, and stuff that come through, but your, your typical average storm event, the intent is not to have it get into the street, correct?
I see. So it's only, it's only in the rare case that they will be overflowing into the.
Yeah, and at that point, I think that the water everywhere is getting into the streets and, and on every property.
I was just, the reason I was asking this is to just see if there's any way that this project can, is also an opportunity to make the drains larger and increase the infiltration capacity of the site overall.
Well, I think it's fair to say that this work will increase the infiltration capacity of the site. Um, the regrading efforts that we're going to have are going to allow uh water on site instead of ponding. It's going to run over land over a longer distance, which will allow it to infiltrate over a broader area. It will also uh be caught in these trench drains that we'll be installing. And as Audrey indicated, the trench drains allow the water to infiltrate down through crushed stone, past filter fabric. Um, and it will uh collect underneath a, a pipe before it reaches the level of the pipe uh before it would flow into a catch basin. So while we can't guarantee that all water will infiltrate, I think we could confidently say that the improvements that we're making will increase infiltration over the site.
Agreed, yep.
Besides avoiding ponding, it will increase infiltration in the site.
It will do both. It will, it will reduce ponding and it will, it will reduce ponding by increasing infiltration. Uh, that's the, that's the full intent, actually.
Mm-hmm, okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Estes Smart Giassi?
Oh, and Chair Parker, I think that um.
My apologies, no additional questions.
Thank you. Uh, Eleanor?
Apologies, I, I know that Alice has her hand raised. I think that she may have had some additional comments about this project.
Okay. Alice?
Thanks Chair Parker. For the record, I'm Alice Brown and I work uh on the Environment Department with um the Conservation Commission and I got to attend the site visit. And one of the things that was interesting that I learned on it was that one of the issues with the ponding today is not in the summer or during heavy rain events. But in the winter, when the ponding turns to ice and makes the entire area very dangerous to use, and I just wanted to add that to help explain some of the previous discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alice.
That's helpful. Okay, um, Commissioner Herbst?
I just had a question about a photo that was included in the, in the site visit files. Um, it's, so maybe it's a question for Eleanor. It's, there's a uh, uh, storm drain with a yellow cover on it and really sort of a lot of material collecting there. Is that in the site area or was that something?
That was taken in Fid Kennedy Boulevard, um, which is actually controlled by the city. And I think it was associated with uh the redevelopment of the former Albon Penn site uh that's located across the street from the Massport Marine Terminal.
Okay, so it's a c- city issue to consider?
I believe so, yeah. I don't, I don't believe we control that catch basin.
Okay, hopefully somebody has taken a look at it. And, and maybe that's why Eleanor captured it. Um, I don't have any questions about this project. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Um, so quick question uh before we um go to the public here. So Chet, um, you are going down a couple of feet, at least in a few areas. What is, there's an, is there an AOL on the property? Um, the soils have to be managed?
There is an AOL on the property and soils will have to be managed uh by a licensed site professional, but there is a licensed site professional on the, on H D R team. Uh, they have G I, G E I that's going to be doing that work. And actually Madeline, uh, in addition to coordinating our Conservation Commission work, um, has an extremely high degree of uh knowledge and experience associated with uh MCP related activities and she'll be heavily involved in the project.
And if I could, if I could add to that, uh, if you don't mind, um, we, when we did our grading and our, our cuts and fill is in our, our balance of the site to make sure there's no offsite, we didn't, we do have the AOL on part of it and we did make sure that any AOL material stayed in the AOL area and any air uh material outside it stayed outside it. And that's how we did our grading. So that, like you, like Chet said, um, with G E I on board, that will have to be managed during construction, but that's the intent, yeah.
Okay, I appreciate that. Eleanor, um, I don't see any hands raised, do you?
I do not see any hands raised and we did not receive any comments in our inbox either.
Okay, so with that, I'd entertain a motion to issue the order conditions and close the hearing with a um special condition that applicant shall inspect all the um uh catch basins uh within the site uh in the adjoining streets and place um fish plates on any catch basins that are missing uh fish plates.
Uh, Commissioner Parker, would, would it be possible to just add uh catch basins own, on Massport property or on within, when the property that Massport leases from the, from the city?
Uh, that's fine. That includes codfish and um.
Yes, yeah, I just, I just don't want Fid Kennedy included because we don't. There, it's adjacent to the site and we don't, we don't own Fid Kennedy, or we don't, we don't lease Fid Kennedy from the city, that's all.
Understood. So I'll take that as a friendly amendment and pass that along to uh my fellow commissioners for someone.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
We're moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Linnae?
Aye.
Commissioner Conan?
Aye.
Commissioner Estes Smart Giassi?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So that carries five, nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Uh, next item on the agenda is a request for a determination of applicability from the City of Boston Planning Department to conduct two soil test borings to support a geotechnical analysis informing the development of a future flood control system at twenty Gillette Park in South Boston. Who's here on behalf of um the Planning Department?
Hey, I'm Ben Mattisso. I'm a Senior Climate and Coastal Resilience Planner.
Great. Okay, floor is yours.
Um, so uh first slide please. Uh, next slide please. Thanks. So this um, this project may be familiar to you all. Uh, Chris Alsgood and Rich McGinnis gave a, a presentation last summer on this. Uh, these geotech borings are to support the uh future construction of a, a flood resilience berm along Four Point Channel. Uh, I'll start out with just a quick overview of the project itself. Uh, but again, this, this RDA is just for the two borings uh on the Gillette property. Next slide please. Uh, just a bit of context, this is one of the reasons why we're doing this project. Um, South Boston and the Seaport uh are vulnerable to flooding. One major flood pathway is through the, the Four Point Channel here. And uh, I'll explain in the next slide kind of exactly where our project is. It's on uh, next slide please. So there's a few segments spanning about five different private properties. The segment where we're proposing to do the, the geotech borings uh is on segment three. This is owned by Gillette. The other properties, we, we got enough geotechnical information to not have to drill and, and explore the soil on the other properties, but um Gillette was not able to provide uh what we needed. So we wanted to investigate the soil before uh continuing farther along with the designs. Next slide please. This is a, a section of what we are intending to, to build. Uh, this is not exact. This is still uh being worked through and, and we will be back here. Um, hopefully on the sooner side with a, a full N O I where we'll dig a lot deeper into designs and, and kind of um a lot more details of the project. But this is, this is the intent for uh much of the project. Next slide please. This is where we are, just to, to contextualize it. Um, we've done a lot of work in terms of designs. We're uh talking with FEMA. Um, awaiting a grant that uh, that we've provided everything for and we're in the final stages of receiving that, of kind of talking through all their needs, but um again, we'll be coming back to you uh because there's a lot more to go uh before we begin construction, of course. Next slide please. So we're proposing to do this geotechnical investigation on two sites uh on the Gillette property. You can see them here in red. Um, they're both kind of on the cusp of the twenty-five foot waterfront area. So we're not sure if, if they're going to be within or without it, but regardless, they're in the hundred foot um buffer zone to the coastal bank and the L S C S F as well. Next slide please, or uh forward. Yeah, and this is just, it zoomed in a bit more. Uh, it's just outside of the existing harbor walk in this paved parking lot. Um, and I'll go more into detail on the next slide. So you can see on the right-hand side and the left, um, where the proposed geotech work would be. Um, we would block off the sites. It wouldn't take more than a week or so. Um, the first step would be to uh vacuum out the, the sites about five to six feet to make sure that we're not hitting any utilities. We, we do generally know where all the utilities are, but that's just a precautionary measure. Um, it's, it's a lot softer and, and you know, it would have a lot less of an impact. And then once we're sure that there's no utilities uh at those, those locations is when we'd be using a four inch drill bit to go much deeper and excavate uh fifty feet in, in one site and then a hundred feet in another um with a water-based um colloidal gel to, to help the, the soil come back up to the surface. Nothing would be leaving the site. We would be storing it in a drum on the site. Um, the full extent of the work would not take more than a week. We don't anticipate any spillage away from the sites. Um, but just as a precaution, we would um fill the areas with catch basins um to prevent anything from getting in there. Um, and any fiber rolls that, you know, might, might lead, might prevent erosion from happening, but we don't, again, we don't anticipate any erosion. This is not um, this is not on the coast and it's not, um, it's not a permanent thing. And uh, the final step would be refilling the holes uh to the extent possible with um, with the soil. Uh, next slide please. Couple of site photos. Um, on the left is uh is site one and the right is site two. Um, we don't anticipate any, any issues um with parking. Gillette knows that we need to do this. We've been in conversation with them um about the need for this work for years at this point. Um, we are waiting on them to uh finalize an amendment to the access agreement we have permitting us uh to do this geotech work. Um, we've been in conversation with them again. So um, we're filing for this uh negative determination of applicability um preemptively. Um, but we are fairly certain that we'll be able to do this work uh as soon as we're permitted. Uh, next slide please. That's all I've got.
Great. Okay, thank you, Ben. Uh, I'll ask a question that's on everyone's mind. You're at thirty percent design. How uh secure is your funding?
Well, it's up to FEMA. Uh, we've got all the sitting, the city funding that we need. Um, so the city has contributed a, a good amount of this. Uh, so we're expecting to receive a ten million dollar grant from FEMA. Um, the city has also matched that. Um, we have a, a portion of that that we've expended uh thus far and that we have uh more than half of that uh still left and we can you know, we can use a good portion of that on this geotech work.
Okay, great. Well, good luck with that. Um, I don't, I don't have any questions. Uh, also, uh, sounds like we are going to need standard erosion control conditions on this R D A, right? Um, Eleanor?
Uh, yes, correct. That was going to be our recommendation.
Okay, um, what do you have?
Uh, that was my, my one comment.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Linnae?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Conan?
Just a quick question. Um, I, I was trying to look at the cross-sectional slide where the existing grade is shown and the mean high tide is shown. And this doesn't impact, you know, the, the result here, I don't think, but just trying to understand there. The mean high tide is shown there and it's pretty close to where the harbor walk level is. What is, where is the hi mark, hi mark watermark? The, like the, the observed high?
I'd have to look to, to see the exact um observed time, but I, I do know that it gets onto the harbor walk um at, at King Tides.
We see. Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Estes Smargiassi?
I, I have no questions related to geotechnical work.
Thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, um, Eleanor, any hands raised? I don't see any.
I see no hands raised and we do not have anything in the inbox either.
We have an ever shrinking audience here. Okay, so with that, I will uh entertain a motion to issue a negative determination of applicability uh with standard erosion controls.
We're moved.
Thank you. Commissioner, um, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Linnae?
Aye.
Commissioner Conan? Commissioner Estes Smargiassi?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So that carries five, nothing. Okay, thank you, Ben. Good luck.
Thanks so much. Have a good night.
Okay, uh, we've had a couple of continuances continued. Our notice of intent for DEP file number zero zero six one nine nine six in Boston, file number twenty twenty-four dash zero two one. And notice of intent for DEP file number uh not assigned. Um, so I'll go a little deeper from Beta Group on behalf of the Department of Conservation and Recreation for various uh activities at Paul Rivera Park, North Washington Street in Charlestown. We'll now begin our regular meeting. Uh, first item on the agenda uh is administrative update time. Eleanor, do you have anything?
We have no administrative updates.
Okay, thank you. Uh, last item on the agenda then would be the acceptance of meeting minutes from April sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, May seventh, twenty twenty-five. And May twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, I've reviewed April sixteenth and May seventh, made a few minor edits. Commissioner Herbst, who was kind enough to chair the hearing two weeks ago, uh, reviewed May twenty-first uh meeting minutes. That's correct, right?
Correct.
Yeah, uh, so uh with that, I would entertain a motion to accept the meeting minutes from April sixteenth, May seventh and May twenty-first of twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
So give a second.
Thank you. Commissioner Linnae?
Aye.
Commissioner Conan?
Aye.
Commissioner Estes Smargiassi?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That carries five, nothing. Okay, to our favorite motion, uh, motion to adjourn by acclamation. Do we have any objections?
Not here.
And we're adjourned. Thank you very much. Uh. Okay, take care.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you all. Have a good night.